Good evening, Williamsburg County citizens and Williamsburg County County Council. Sound check for Facebook and our conference call. Citizens may call into the conference call line, which is 877-309-2073. That access code is 590-380-589. Are we good with sound? Very good. We have a heavy schedule, so we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order, which is scheduled for today, April 4th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Invocation will be by Mr. Miller.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for the opportunity to come before the citizen of Williamsburg County to try to do the work that's determined the outcome of our business. We ask you, Heavenly Father, to guide us in our hearts and minds that those decisions made tonight would be to the benefit of the citizen of Williamsburg County. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Miller. We have nothing for third reading and nothing for...
Skip.
Oh. As I skip around the agenda. We need a motion for approval of the minutes regularly scheduled. Council meeting that was held March 7th, 2022.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposer is the same. The motion is carried. Next, we don't have anything for third reading or a second reading. However, members of council, we did not have on here. We need you first, before we get into the budget issues, to first approve the budget calendar. It should be one that should be attached to your documents. That's the first thing we need to do. If you hold for a brief pause, she's going to go get the calendar.
Yeah, I don't see.
In any event, the calendar has not changed much. We do know that this is a budget season, and we must follow the things in order. Some of the things that we will have to look at in reference to the calendar, obviously, is third reading and the timeframe that's set forth for the public hearing are all important when dealing with the budget and ensuring that we give enough time for those things to take place. So what I am going to do is, for the sake of time, I am going to jump into the first reading. But before we get into that, there's a few things I need to talk to members of council about in reference to how we're actually going to undertake this budget season. According to South Carolina law, Section 4-9-420, it is the county supervisor's responsibility to prepare the annual operating and capital improvement budget for submission to council. Also, according to the South Carolina law, 4-9-140, the designation of the fiscal budget for adoption falls in sync with council's approval and formal adoption of the budget. With all of that being said, I met with department and elected officials about a month ago to discuss the new process that I would like to enact this year. With no new revenue coming to the county at this time, we have an increase to the tune of 264,000 in employer's share of health insurance, fuel costs, and retirement. Also, we have a decrease in the taxes, the tax revenue that we were receiving from CSX. I didn't want them to spend weeks on preparing a budget for funding that would not be available to them. As it is in the cost of doing business, things have increased. We're having to adjust those needs to meet the underlying demand for services. We're not receiving any sustainable revenue, and with an even greater challenge of the loss of revenue, we are forced to prepare a budget that could potentially include more reduced services. Just know that my office will be preparing the budget for council and will be responsible for preparation of that budget. It will be council's requirement that they advise me as to how they would like to proceed so that, at the end of the day, we have an approved and an adopted budget, balanced budget. Last budget season, we were able to present a balanced budget during the first reading. But now, with the issues we face with the increases in services, health insurance, and the other increases in the loss of revenue, it's going to make this budget season quite challenging. We were able to come to a good solution last budget season while we utilized the budget funding that was received from the 2019 approved budget period, which council approved to have the reduction of their appropriations of the outside agencies, along with the reduction of recycling center hours, along with the reduction in the IT equipment, and unfunding positions within the sheriff's office, got us through the 2019 season. In 2020, we got by the consolidation plan, the retirement incentive program, the furlough of employees, and the 15% reduction of all budgets. We are going to struggle this season. Please start to think of areas in which you recommend for reduction. Each member of council should have received in your budget packet the expected revenue and a copy of some of the expenses up until now, which would be considered the previous year's expenses, and you will be able to look through that and decide where the cuts will occur. County departments have expressed a desire to meet with members of council to discuss their issues with the budget, and we have done so, granted that. So within your calendar, in which you have now in front of you, is the date in which those who would like to meet before members of council will have the opportunity to do so on those dates to discuss their issues with the budget. Now, mind you, we are going into now year three with already the reductions that have already been put in place and approved, and now we are yet another year facing additional reductions because of the cost of living expenses and operating expenses increasing. So I said all that to say, we are now in first reading, title only, of the budget. At this time, all I need is someone to motion for first reading, and then we can move on with the business if you have no other questions.
Motion for first reading, Madam Supervisor.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Our next order of business is the committee report. Do you have a copy of that? Thank you. So we met with the Budget Committee on March 30th, 2022, at 3:00 p.m., and there were two areas in which we discussed. The first area was dealing with how are we going to find a suitable replacement for our Chief of Finance, who has managed to stay with us longer than what was expected? I believe it was two years longer than what was expected. We have advertised the position locally and in the various hiring and recruiting companies. However, we have found no one that had the opportunity to apply. So we are at a dead end right now, and her end date is June 30th. So in order to find someone that is suitable for the position, we are going to have to hire a professional recruiting company to help us seek out good candidates. Currently, after speaking with a few of them, a few of the things that they're going to be asking for is they want to have 25% of the first year's salary of a finance, Chief of Finance position. Also, possible moving expenses were included in that recruitment effort, and the starting salary starting at 100K for a CPA. So as members of council are going to have to make a decision as to, do you want me to proceed with bringing in a professional recruiting company in order for us to get the position filled?
Madam Supervisor, is it purely just the salary that's not attracting qualified candidates? Or we're just not hearing anything, pretty much?
So we didn't even list the salary, but we're just not getting any candidates. We list the requirements that we wanted, but nothing in reference to salary. We hadn't even had anyone call us to see, you know, what the salary was being offered, and obviously, we did that on purpose. So this is going to cost us a good deal of money to get a CPA who has the ability to become a GFO, which is Government Financial Officer certified, within a year.
And this company, if we use them, what would be their bottom line dollar that we would be kicking out to them for?
25% of the decided salary for the first year. So that's like about 25,000 if they're going to start the person off with 100K. I could not negotiate any less salary with those qualifications required. So I don't have to have an official. I just need you to tell me, what avenue do you all want us to proceed?
And how long have we been advertising again?
Approximately two years.
Okay.
Something like that. Am I right, Liz?
Keep Liz.
Yeah. And she has said she will stay with us to help us shepherd a new person in, but seriously, she's like, I'm ready to do the things that I want to do. So she's stayed on for two additional years.
You know, I hate to spend money as much as the next man, but we're going to need somebody to control the money and look after the money. So I would say, let's hire somebody to find somebody. If we've been advertising between this and still can't find somebody, I mean, I'm not making a recommendation, but that's what I think, anyway.
I think it should be a recommendation because, I mean, we can't kick this can down the road too much, Father.
Okay.
That's the only thing I can see to do, is to hire an agency to come in and assist us. It's two years we haven't reached there yet.
Okay, I got it. So what I will do is, I am going to reach out to a few different companies that would be willing to assist us. I've already spoke to one, actually, two of them, and they're saying about the same thing. My only concern is, again, you know, those things also, to make a great package, they could include moving expenses and things like that. So that's something that we would have to be prepared for once a candidate has been vetted. And usually, the process is, they will vet the candidate first, and then if those candidates meet our needs, then they will forward those candidates to us. And I believe that it needs to be a council's decision as far as a recommendation for who we choose to be the next Finance Chief, that this should not solely rely on me.
Noted.
All right.
Noted.
Thank you. All right. The other item that we discussed during the Finance Committee meeting was, I'm not sure I didn't hand these out to you all, but I'm getting ready to hand you something now, and you can begin to look at it as I talk about it. If you all have been watching, across the state, there have been a number of changes made to salaries in order to recruit people. The market for employment is extremely large. People are looking for people anywhere they can find them to fill positions, and Williamsburg County is not separate from that push to get good employees. What we are finding is that we are losing our employees to other agencies, and with the new announcements being made, I feel and I fear that we're going to lose even more. With the concentration on our public safety agencies, such as our Williamsburg County Fire Department, our Sheriff's Office Detention Center, our Transit, as well as our Public Works Department, we are losing people quickly, weekly, in some cases, and we are going to have to do something in order to keep our viable workforce in Williamsburg County. So one of the things that we are going to address tonight, and it came before Finance, is the Williamsburg County Fire Department, and later on, we will be dealing with the other areas. And then, you know, as a complete circle, we're going to have to reevaluate all salaries in government because we are losing our people. As far as keeping in mind, the solution that we have that I just handed out to you is a Band-Aid for an issue that we're going to have to deal with ongoing. So what we have done, and what was the suggestion to be done, was that we do similarly to what they did in EMS. The difference in what happened in EMS and what is happening in the Fire Department is because when things are left unchecked, they tend to overrun themselves. So what I call a forecasted salary, a forecasted overtime salary is what the request is going to be. We looked at about two years of overtime for the Fire Department. We took that forecasted timeframe of how many hours, on average, that they would work in one year overtime. We took that and we inputted that into their current salary, along with their training hours, and I was able to come up with an increase that would allow them the opportunity to, without exceeding the budget amount, without going over budget, without even impacting the budget, allow them the opportunity to see a higher rate while still keeping them within the same overtime boundaries. So what I have done was listed their hours, which you will see, they're going to be, and it's at the bottom, those are the hours that are under consideration. It's a total of little over 400 and some odd hours that they would have that we would already embed into their salary, which would create the increase for them. And again, this is a Band-Aid to the situation.
The current salary, is the health insurance and the retirement, is that included in there?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So we are asking, as far as the Finance Committee, that we approve these changes to the salary. And again, as I stated earlier, it would not have any budgetary impact. They will be pulling additional funding from the different sources that they have available to them that do not impact the general fund budget or operating budget at all. The chief is here. If you have any questions for him. Currently, we are two firemen down because they have gone to other jurisdictions, and more importantly, they've gone to jurisdiction in the same county.
So you did this based off of the overtime. So with these numbers, you're saying that that has nothing to do with their current overtime that they would be receiving? The funding that we use to give them the overtime that they need is not what we would be using to pay this money, correct?
No. The 384 hours of overtime is what they're projected to spend. So I think you're probably asking me that what happens if they go over the 384 hours of overtime? Well, that's pretty much a forecast time, the only time that they have forecasted over the last few years, and it may be a little under and it may be a little over. So we do have some wiggle room in that. But usually, when a fire department, or even any department, expends overtime, it's usually due to a natural disaster that has occurred, and then you will reap your reimbursement back once you apply for the funds.
And so, as a result, that's a reason, as well as with the money that they have coming from other sources, as to why it will not impact our budget?
Correct. And they're on a different funding source. They have a millage that's been designated for their operation.
So what happens if they go over their overtime?
So if they go over their overtime, in most cases, it would be used for, it would be an emergency that may have occurred. And then, in that case, whether it's a hazmat, then the fire chief will be ended up charging the company that created that situation, anyway. However, if we begin to see them go over their overtime, then we can always back out of it.
So in other words, just one other question. We've had some problem with the Labor Department, and I know overtime is a big thing with them. Is that something that we could do?
Yes. Very similar to what was done with EMS. However, the problem with EMS was that not enough staff was brought on. This would have been a pretty decent ideal, but the problem was, is that you didn't have enough people to fill positions, thus making you utilize and push more overtime than what you had allocated for them. And you have to monitor this. You have to see where we are quarterly to see what the overtime is looking like. Then you know at that point, what do you need to do to adjust for that? Is that about right, Chief? You want something to say? Come on. You need to say something.
I'm good with yourself.
If you don't have any questions.
Yeah, I think just the major concern is, is that overtime, and I think both of us kind of asked the same question, you know, what happens as a result of that? And so if you feel confident that we can take care of this, I think we should go ahead and take care of it for you.
Yes. 384 hours, that's overtime, that's, you know, like you said, it's going to be under, you know, except we have a lot of major disasters, and we know that basically falls back into a different overtime category.
Okay.
What happened with the Lewis guy? The Lewis?
Your town, better pay. Him away.
On record, okay.
Yes, careful.
On record.
Him away, got him. Town or him away.
Yeah, I know they got him, but why did he live in the fire shelter?
More money. More money, salary. More money. He's close to the home, but he's going to still be with us as a volunteer firefighter.
Awesome.
But it's just more money.
Well, I got to say...
We have two now. It's not Lewis, it's also Cal, Wayne Marsh.
You guys just be reminded that we are on record, and we are discussing personnel matters. Go ahead. You know, so yes, we have two that are leaving. I try to keep the names out of it. So we are, and the chief is doing a good job at forecasting these things and able to get people lined up to assume those positions.
Well, I'm excited because I know the chief has been trying to get increases for a long time, and so I'm excited about that, and I'm really excited that it was able to be accomplished without impacting the budget, so.
Madam Supervisor, you need a motion?
Yes. Also, I just also want you to take note that I did tell her that it was a different millage that was being taken out. I mentioned that earlier. Is that right? Right. Separate millage from us that he has been receiving to keep the operational needs of the Fire Department met. Also, we are also going to have to begin to look at, and this is what the chief did express to, our volunteers and the fact of the high gas costs, and they are responding in their own POVs, and we're going to have to do something to try to supplement them or incentivize them to go out and assist our existing Fire Department. So that's going to be next on the list, as soon as we figure out how to pay for it. If there are no other questions, for the two issues that we have on the table, I'm asking for a motion for council to approve.
Motion to approve the new rate for firefighters, Madam Supervisor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposer is the same. Now, with the, actually, that was on our Finance Committee, so I'm going to have to get a motion for us to proceed with a recruiting company for the position of Chief of Finance.
Make a motion to move forward with proceeding to get a recruiting company to hire for the CFO position.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposer is the same. Motion is carried. Our next order of business is... A parent from PD Coalition, Ms. Frida Cox, who will be here, I guess, discussing with the Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Yeah, he had a call.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's what that's about.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all for allowing me to come before you again. April and October are our observance months of the area of interpersonal violence that we assist the citizens here in Williamsburg County with. April is nationally known as Child Abuse Prevention Month and Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and so we have events scheduled throughout the county, and I left you all some information in front of you about the different dates that things are going to be held at. But just want to remind you just how important it is and how impacted our communities are by these forms of violence. Every 73 seconds, someone is sexually assaulted in the United States, and that averages out to be a little over 400,000 people in a year, and that's, I mean, that is something else. A report of abuse for children, on the other hand, happens every 10 seconds. That means there's a lot of abuse that's going on in our world here. And, you know, these people grow up to be citizens here in the county with lots of issues. And so we at PD Coalition are planning these events to really bring some attention to what's going on here in Williamsburg County. Just wanted to give you a little bit of information about how many children actually are seen in Williamsburg County as far as getting forensic exams and also getting therapy. In 2021, Durant Children's Center, which is a part of the PD Coalition, assisted 80 victims, and we are projecting to do even more this year because there have been some state protocol changes, and so far, and it's just not quite half the, well, for us, it is almost half the year, we've seen 56 already. So that is why we are really pushing to try to get a children's center that's located here in the county, and instead of having those children that are traumatized already to travel to Sumter, to travel to Florence, and to travel to Hartsfield at our other locations, we want a center here to, you know, really, really add to the convenience for the parents that's going through, you know, having something like this happen to them and their child. So there is work going on. We've kind of picked out a building, and you all, I tell you what, I heard all the budget woes just a few minutes ago. I feel bad asking, but we also submitted a letter of request to you all. We asked that you take a look at it, and you guys are good at juggling and figuring it out. I hope you continue to do so and keep us in mind when that happens. And one thing on this flyer here that I really would love to see is everyone's face at the Red Carpet Breakfast that we are hosting with the Home Time Chamber. It's from 7:00 to 9:00, and just come out and socialize with everybody from the business community, service providers, and all, okay? That's one thing that I really would love to see you all support, and if you have the time, we're going to be doing a pinwheel garden out here in the median to bring attention to child abuse prevention, and that's going to be on April 13th, and we're going to have a little short program, it'll take about 30 minutes. going to have a little short program, it'll take about thirty minutes. So it would love, I would love to see someone from county government to come out and support us. If you all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
You said currently all of our, um, young people who go, who have suffered trauma or newly, um, those new pers- new persons, they have to travel outside of the county?
Yeah, and sometimes, um, like if, um, there's a hospital call and they bring the child to the hospital, well, a lot of times they have to go to Charleston to go to AMUSC, where they have the, the right equipment and everything to do, um, a non-invasive type of, um, examination, you know, with the right equipment. I forget what they call this, a culture scope or something like that they use. And so, um, it's really a big inconvenience to families, and then, you know, transportation is a problem here in the county, and if you can't get to downtown King Street to go to the grocery store, how you going to get to Sumter? How you going to get to Charleston? So, you know, there, it, it is a big deal. Like I said, we have someplace in mind, is right on Main Street, and it would be just a, a lovely addition, a lovely, a service, and a needed service, um, to the citizens here in Williamsburg County. And, um, to tell you the truth, the numbers definitely, definitely says that we need to do something in this county, because actually the numbers are higher in Williamsburg County than it is in some of the other seven counties that we serve. So. Keep us in mind. Y'all finagle? Yeah, sure.
Is red carpet attire required for the red carpet workers?
Please. No, just, yeah. Come in your work clothes. Mm-hmm. None of that, none of that. Not seven AM in the morning.
I was looking at that, but I didn't know, so I thought you had stopped.
First of all, thank you, Ms. Coxford, for providing that information for us. It was good for you, for us to know what's going on in our county and also to know what your needs are for this, um, wonderful organization you guys have. Any other questions, members of council? No? Okay. Moving on to the next thing is the county maintain lease park renewals. Got anything you want to say about it, other than, are, are we going to decide if there, are we going to keep the existing list and that list is included in your packet?
Down in the paper.
Yes, sir.
Oh. It was, it was in our packet with, with Mr. Jenkins and, um, I'm just talking about this muddy creek, so. Um, that, that, that is, it is old, no question about it, it's old. But, but, but it's in pretty good shape. And capital indicated no desire to enter into such an agreement. I must have been absent at me. But anyway, um, does, does the county, does the county have any recreation or community buildings that they support, excuse me, with, uh, uh, with, uh, insurance or paying for utilities or doing some upkeep? Do they, the, 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 the junk that we don't own?
All, a good bit of them, we do all of that for, with those we do not own. Yes.
So, so they do pay some?
Mm-hmm. They pay insurance, um, electricity, if it's a telephone there, if it's water there. Mm-hmm.
I would like, what I would like, I'm not going to make a motion, but I would like to ask if, if, if Mr. Jenkins or the county could go back and get a lease, enter into a lease with the school district, um, for whatever it is, five years or whatever. Uh, because, because you know, uh, even though we've got the Mitchum Center, uh, and, uh, we got Chavis, and of course, they are owned by the county, uh, then, but, but this is the only one down there, and, and, and it was being rented pretty good at one time, and then COVID came, and, and everything stopped. And it's hard getting this thing started, that matter of fact, I had a lady come to the house today, and she, she wanted to rent, and I told her that she would have to see a turquoise, well, she would have to see the Recreation Department and get, and get the fees and, and, and do this. But I would sure like to be able to, to, to ask if we could go back and talk with, with, with the school district and see if we could get a lease, and then, and then talk about it, and then talk about muddy creek. Whatever y'all want to do with the other ones, I, you know, but I'm just, I'm just kind of zeroed in on muddy creek. So that's what I'm asking, so if we could maybe, and then if they say no, we can, then, then, then that'll be it. And that'll answer my question. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. What about the other parks? Stucky has asked that we continue with their agreement as well?
Yeah, we, we've had, um, the only one I didn't see that changed on here, I don't see where the Bloomingville Community Building or the grounds after we met, um, that one needs to be updated as well, uh, to say that we want to continue. And I think those are the only three. We all, and we already talked about the Morrisville Park.
Yes, so Morrisville, so basically, what I am hearing is that all seventeen parks, well, seventeen community, nineteen community buildings, you all want to keep all of those?
I don't know about the seventeens, but...
Madam, oh, I'm sorry.
But the, the Morrisville, the Bloomingville, and the Stucky.
Okay.
Madam Supervisor, on, uh, the Sutton Park, uh, and the, uh, Triyo Park, uh, at some, at one point, I think that we could, uh, either with the Sutton Park, we might be able to have that taken over by the church. And the Triyo Park, before, uh, the election came up, there was some discussion with the men, the man that owned that park, is that he was at that time willing to donate it, uh, as long as we kept the family name. But once we got, uh, campaigning and other promises was made, he changed his mind, uh, because the other people campaigned and made other promises. And of course, you know how, when campaigning is, there's a whole bunch of stuff going on. So I would, with those particular parks, I would like to look at those parks and see if those, uh, different people would, would like to take over those, those parks. And the St. Lawrence Center, I'm sure that, if I'm not mistaken, uh, uh, Ms. Rouse and, and, uh, Mr. Jenkins has been negotiating with that one.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so what, whatever the outcome with the St. Lawrence Park is fine, but there's an opportunity, I think, with the Sutton Park and the Triyo Park, that, uh, other people might want to take that over. And I, I would, I would, uh, ask that we look into that situation, because that might be something that, that can be worked out, and we may be able to get the Triyo Park, just with the promise that, uh, we just maintain the family name.
Okay. I believe we own the community building, we do own that, it's just the property outside of it, we don't. And so Centros ago, um, Hebron Park. That would be Mr. Wood's district. And I believe he has expressed interest in keeping that, because he stated he had given up, um, some of his parks, and he wants to keep that one, and the Pearl Whack Center Park. I was going to say the Gruyeville Park. Bloomingvale Community Building, that one's off the table, they're going to take that one, right? We're just maintaining the grounds, which the grounds is listed in number thirteen, well, that's the boat landing, but we're just going to take the, oh, yeah, number nine is the grounds, Councilman Wilson.
Oh, you're talking about the Bloomingville?
Mm-hmm. Their actual community building, not the building next to the...
Not the building itself.
Right.
But we, I mean, we already talked about how we wanted to write it up and everything.
Correct. So, okay, I'm just making notes for the, our attorney. And obviously, we own J.J. Mitchum. So, understanding this and understanding the constraints that we now are faced, and obviously, we own Chavis One Stop, and then also the introduction to the new state park, we're going to have a lot of parks in Williamsburg County. So we just need to make sure we're preparing ourselves for that, and the financial burden that it's going to create on our budget. So, Mr. Billy, I have a sheet for you, and we can start working on those updated leases. Now, my idea is to make sure that we do new leases on these facilities, because the leases that, the leases that were in place were not properly voted on nor properly signed by the proper person authorized to sign the lease agreements. So, we need to redo all of them, even if the time has not expired yet, and get new leases with a little, with some, a little bit more meat in them, um, in the event something happens and that property has all of our property on it, like we have now, we got, we own half the property, but the hot, the property is split between the buildings, so you can't split the building up now, it's there. So for us to try to get control of that, so that we are better positioned to be able to, to deal with these facilities if something goes wrong. There's any other questions about the parks and the facilities? No? Okay. All right. This time... I already did that. Oh, next, we need to go back to it. So we need a motion, you all have the calendar at this time?
For the budget?
Mm-hmm. You all have the budget calendar? At this time? He's, he's a county employee. He's a county employee. Ms. James, I ask that you please wait until after the meeting for you to ask a question. Right, but if you will, can you please hold your question until after we finish the meeting? Yes. No, we're going in executive session, you can agree to ask him that before we go in executive session, but not while we're on the record. No ma'am. That's a county employee asking for clarity. That's all. You are all right, and you can get on the agenda in the future if you need to. If your issue does not deal with day-to-day operation, you are welcome to be on the agenda. Moving on to the next order of business, which is our, um, proposed calendar, I'm asking you for a motion for approval of the calendar.
So move to approve, uh, the, the proposed calendar.
Second.
Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the budget schedule for the 2022-2023 budget year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposer's the same. The motion is carried. We need a motion to enter into executive session according to section three zero dash four dash seven zero A two, to receive an update concerning FTC tax litigation.
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposer's the same. We are now in executives, going into executive session. Opposer is the same, we are now in executive, going into executive session. All right, members of council, we need a motion to return the regular council meeting. Any discussion?